Lauren, we have a roll call, please.
Anne Hill.
Present.
Laura Breakstone.
Present.
Carrie Steinbach.
Here.
Lauren Hirsch.
Here.
Janthor Carlson.
Here.
Richard Driver.
Here.
Tim Pench.
Here.
We are all here. Nancy, since you're here tonight, would you like to read our mission, vision and motto?
Sure.
Do you have it in front of you?
Yeah. Um, mission ensure academic achievements and personal growth for all students throughout innovative and engaging educational opportunities. Vision and inclusive community for of motivated learners who are inspired to change the world through exploration and collaboration. Motto excellence in education, enthusiasm for every student, every day.
Well, thank you. And this is the pledge of allegiance, so why don't we do that now? I pledge allegiance to the law. Thank you. At this point in the meeting, we welcome public comment. I'm happy to see a lot of people here in the audience today. There's no pressure to make public comment, but if anybody would like to, you're welcome to now. All right, not seeing any, we'll move on, thank you. And we'll get right into our discussions and presentations for the night. The first one being the Growing Native Habitat, Sue Raymore. Welcome.
Hello, good evening. And I have with me Anne Bergdahl. She has a lot of history in the school, so we're gonna let her talk too, but.
One.
Thought we'd start with a, I have a couple slides to explain to us who we are and why we're here, so.
I think we're getting.
Okay, she should get it out there.
Falling book, sorry. Well, this book is why we're here. We'll get to that.
You can leave now, but it needs a book. Have any of you heard of Growing Native Habitat Lake Bluff? Got one, okay, good, good. We're here to educate a little bit, hopefully not too much, but again, we are at school. Growing native community. We are a growing native community and everything we've done has been inspired by Doug Tallamy's Nature's Best Hope. If you haven't read it, you may leave a copy. It's a phenomenal book and it is my gateway drug, my gateway drug, I'm a pharmacist. It changed my life, it changed a lot of people's life and it's an easy read, it's a wonderful book. We'll talk a little bit about it. He's got a quote, "In the past, we've asked one thing of our gardens to be pretty. Now they have to support life, sequester carbon, feed pollinators and man and water." Big lift from the world that we grew up with. We'll go to the next slide. Before we get there, when I started this a long time ago, we started as a two-string group, we're now over 200 people in our growing native group. Our goal is to provide corridors for our pollinators and other insects and animals without which our food system collapses. Essentially support our ecosystem that is mostly replaced by development and significant loss of diversity. And planting natives is really the key. From coast to coast, our cities and suburbs have become much more similar to each other and less and less like our natural habitat. And this is just a picture of the sky. The growing uniformity of the American landscape is significantly reducing biodiversity. Like no other time and no, like none other in our lifetime, over 1,000 US species are at risk of extinction. And each loss makes our ecosystem more fragile. In fact, one-third of America's wildlife species are at risk of extinction. So you've got 90% with butterflies, 30% of birds.
With the monarch butterfly specifically, it's like 95% down.
And most.
So was it decent year, seasonally?
Decent year, but the trend is still down. One year does not make a statistical significant change. Want to go to the next slide? So the consequences of lost habitat. During the past decade, research has established a strong link between biodiversity and human health. Scientists have shown have reduced diversity amongst the emergence and spread of infection such as Lyme disease, West Nile virus, Zika. The microbes that cause these serious illnesses multiply rapidly in degraded and disturbed habitats. There was a recent study that linked the shark drop in a local bat population to increased infant mortality. It really is nature and health and that is Anne, Anne is a physician and that's her specialty now, it's nature and health.
Yeah, basically what happened was the farmers had more insects on their property, so they had to use more pesticides because the bats eat so many insects, but because of the white-nose fungus, their population tanked about 90% in some areas. So the researcher compared counties that had the fungus in the bats with those that didn't and saw 8% increase in human mortality, infant mortality, just because of the bats, so.
And the increase in pesticide use.
Right, yeah, right. It's just, it's so much more complicated than we have believed, the interaction of all other species.
So let's dig in, if you notice the shovel, and I hope you see the child running across the family. That's one of our, one of our group's daughters, some of you may recognize her. So we, we started Growing Native Habitat back in 2018, you can put it back down, yeah, to that picture right there. We started it in 2018, about six months ago, we heard that Highland Park had gotten something called the National Wildlife Federation Community Wildlife Habitat, I made Rita say that like six times, yeah, a couple months ago. And theirs is a, they look at habitat, not necessarily, we started with native plants, they look at habitat. Doug Tallamy is an entomologist. It's a food web, it's a worldwide food web and they're all connected. So you can come at this from many different angles. So with National Wildlife Federation, we started looking at that, get their, it provides, the program provides us with some structure and how to do things and helps us with resources. We have a lot of resources for children, for adults, that helps us go faster. When we looked into this program, we did a lot of research and we realized we weren't really doing this. We were so far ahead of the game that.
For example, that's Artesian Park where we have a demonstration, native garden that we had already done.
Yeah, we did that.
Which was one of the criteria.
Has anyone seen it?
Yeah, it's right by the. Yeah.
We have a picture later on, this is what it looks like.
This is what it was when we were digging it, yeah.
So. So the next page. So then this is their logo and as you can see, Habitat Essentials Checklist. It's a methodology that they have that they provide to us that lets us get there faster. And so there's a lot of tiers to that, a lot of work to be done, but we figured that this was gonna help us. It also gets us national recognition, so it's not just, it's local, but it's also nationally renowned. So here, this is, this is their methodology that the National Wildlife Federation uses and it's really, that's why we call it Growing Native Habitat Lake Bluff. As we started with plants, but it's everything, the food, the water, the cover, places to raise young. If you have all those things, you will encourage your habitat. Habitat isn't just planting a plant, it's attracting the insects, it's, it's so much more. And sustainable practices are just reduced to zero, if possible, the use of pesticides because they're so detrimental to all of our insects.
And human health.
And human health, yes, human health for sure. Places to raise young, I always said, look up, look up, you see the trees, look up. Cover for our bunny rabbits to hide and never be found. And then water, we know water is a big issue, we're redoing the sewers. We live in Lake County with so much water and how we handle that water makes a difference. And then food, and food can start with a bird feeder, but then hopefully you get your native plants that the birds eat and berries that the birds live on in the winter and hazel nuts for the squirrels to munch on. Next slide. So we ask why native, growing native habitat. By planting native plants, you attract the insects that provide service and food for others on the worldwide web. We provide the plants and the rest will come, and that really is true. If you want to save the birds, you have to save the bugs, there is just no way around it. 90% of our songbirds feed caterpillars to their babies and it takes at least 5,000 caterpillars to feed one nest of baby birds. So think about that, so when we talk about getting rid of pesticides, it's to allow the caterpillars to be able to feed. We want the butterflies, they're so pretty, but we also have to feed the birds. And there's room to do it. There's over 63,000 acres of grass in our country and grass is ecologically dead. It doesn't support any, any of our food chain because it's not native here. In addition, because it isn't native here, we spend a lot of money on chemicals to keep it green and keep the weeds up. Yes, so that much acres of not supporting wildlife, there's a lot we can do. Next slide. So here's an example, I don't know if you can see, can you see the caterpillar on the left? Is that not the cutest caterpillar? That's probably eye mark on it, that's really not an eye that you see. That caterpillar was on the Union Church spice bush and there's not a single leaf left on it. It was eaten by the, by the caterpillars. They will come back, no harm to the plant, we worry about that, no harm to the plant. And this is what it turns into, it's a spice bush swallowtail. It's a lovely butterfly and you see it, you just, you want to attract that. So that bug is the precursor to the butterfly, but it's also food for the birds, so very important. This is a good example of why native. The spice bush swallowtail will only feed on a spice bush. If you don't have a spice bush, you won't have a spice bush swallowtail. And I can give you the names of every single plant to support morning cloaks and mid-painted ladies and of course, we all know monarchs and milkweed, but there's hundreds of them and hundreds of examples and they all, many of them are specific to one, if not one species, to one genus of plants. Next slide.
That's our garden.
This is our garden, so we planted this in 2022 and this picture was taken, I think, in 2023.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we did it as a demonstration garden and since this picture was taken, we've added a education board and then we've also added a little mini, little library, lending library. And we keep it with, with funding that we get from nice people and grants. We have been kept, we've kept it stocked with books on nature.
For adults and children.
We have one row for adults, one row for kids.
And it's used.
We have to restart the kid one every week.
Yeah.
So if you have kid books in nature you don't want, we'll take them back.
Yeah, yeah, so it's well-used.
So here's our logo, as you can see, Growing Native Habitat, this is what National Wildlife Federation did for us. We had, we wanted to come up with a logo and we had to name a community and this was hard, but, but we did. We also think it's so important that even though we're called Growing Native Lake Bluff, we are truly Growing Native District 65. So National Wildlife Federation is tracking the number of communities to get certified. So we had to, we had to give it a town name, but we are very clear that we felt it's so important for all the kids. That, that's who thinks of Lake Bluff as home, if anyone who goes to school here, it's kids here. So, School 65. And it's not just because of that that we named it 65, we think it's really important. Once you start on this path, seeing the interchange of, I plant the native plant and then I get the spice bush butterfly. And I do this and this happens and then you start seeing the interaction of things that happen, it's truly amazing. And kids love it when they get a chance to see it, adults love it. You start seeing birds and insects and start seeing the exchange and the awe. It's science, exploration and a bit of meditation all in one, and it truly is. I am not a gardener, but now I call myself a habitat builder. And Ashley back there knows I'm not a gardener because my yard is not pristine. Okay, next one. So why are we here? We are certified, we, in less than six months, it takes normally between two and three years to get certified. We did it in under six months.
And there's a lot of criteria.
Yeah.
For education and outreach and admin and then we had to get 150 points, which included schools, the city and private homes. So it was, it does, it may be like, oh, we just got this, but it really was a lot of work by a core group of people. I mean, it's very impressive, it's kind of like Tree City or Bird City, but much more that you had to do, many more criteria, because we are in Lake Bluff already a tree city and a bird city. But this is a much bigger achievement.
So not only, we got certified and the village got certified, but the schools got certified. So National Wildlife Federation really promotes youth in this group and we have, I don't think we've ever done anything, had any kind of meeting where kids weren't welcome. We do scavenger hunts, we have them dig, we have them, we're just always adding to it, we work with Lake Bluff Open Lands.
Here we go, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah.
Yes, and next weekend, we have a moth ball, which is a national trend, but you can describe it. It's at dusk looking for moths because they are the biggest pollinator, but we don't see them besides around our lights at night, which some of us would say should be dimmed.
Or turned off, yeah.
Yes. Or for the most, it's a cat or moths, yeah. But, but so we're gonna do one at Artesian, at our garden, for any kids who want to come with their parents to show them the moths, we have a special.
Yeah, so we are certified and the schools are certified and we, we've spoken with the school and we, we are very engaged, but we're reaching out to everybody, we've talked to the village, the park district, the school, the library, the garden club, anybody we can talk to that will listen about how important we think this is. And like I said, we're up to 220 people on our list, so it's attracting people, it's interesting and we bring kids along the way whenever we can.
And we have worked, like I did participate through Lake Forest Open Lands for some of the Lake Bluff school outings. That was the green.
The preserve.
Yeah. And so we've done things with the kids, but we didn't have as much programs with this. We've met with Lisa and we've talked about some plans and, well, Nate knows, 2002 and way back when, I planted with the kids at least four gardens at East and that got torn down. I planted Prairie at Central because you guys had a Prairie unit for third and fourth graders, we did it every year and we talked to them. That had to get torn down, we did Sullivan Woods, we cleared it from the buckthorn. Every year we would go out with Mr. Brown's class and others and remove the garlic mustard and we put in that educational outdoor classroom. Of course, it's been a few years, 20 years, we have a big dedication for the whole school to come out and we did plant stuff in the front. Now I think the front just got replanted, the Prairie got lost in the new building, but the woods are still there. That's sort of the last thing that we did, a little here too, in the front entrance way by the sign. So we've done a lot in the past and we are, of course, native, but interested in if we can assist in any way with the schools with that kind of an interest. I asked my son as I was coming here, do you remember that? I loved it and I'm telling you, the kids love being out there digging in the soil and putting plants and what do you guys think? Do you like to get out in the dirt? Yeah? All right, good, my God, anyway.
Yeah, so we, we, we're reaching out to everybody and we hope with the school district, we can help. We are not educators, although there are a few educators with us, so we aren't doing lesson plans, but we hope that we can help, you know, implement programs that the schools want to do or encourage or give suggestions or however we can support the educators, because you know, the kids are so important. The next one, we're reaching out to everybody, we're not educators, but we hope to help. So hopefully we can instill a love of nature, this is my grandson, we had a Chicago River Day. And again, we collaborate, so this we collaborated with, with the Chicago River Day Association, the stewards of them and Lake Bluff Open Lands and we had a work day pulling garlic mustard, but then some of the, some of our members had little projects for the kids. So we made paper vases out of the weeds that we pulled. We let them pull plants, but only the ones we were trying to discourage. So the other reason, this is a very personal thing for me, but the other reason I was drawn to this, the book just changed my life. But it was also my grandkids, I just had grandchildren. And I'll probably start crying, but this is a quote from David Brower. "We don't inherit the earth from our ancestors, we borrow it from our children." And if you think about that, you really care about the earth and the last thing I want to do is leave this earth a mess for my grandchildren. So that was my motivation along with this book, it was a way forward. So I'll end with another quote from Albert Einstein, "Look deep into nature and you will understand everything better." So thank you very much, any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
How did we find out more about Moth and Earth?
Well, let's see, we have some handouts.
And you are cold.
So we have a website, we have an email address, soft, and.
Oh, this.
We just had a Lake Bluff oak sale, we actually collected acorns. I don't know if anyone knows this, which is the Health Bank store of the library and they have this beautiful bur oak in their backyard and, you know, with so many bur oaks have been injured and damaged from the droughts and excessive drought and then flooding that we had about five years ago. We're having a lot of old trees die, but it's those older trees that can't get through all, it's, they don't have the immune system anymore to fight those. So we took these acorns and we had them grown and we're selling them back at Lake Bluff Oaks and the grower of the, we have greenhouse we like for us to grow them, he said he's never seen such beautiful oaks. So that we can bring back Lake Bluff Oaks and keep planting them, so we're, we're working on many different areas, but any way we can get the kids involved would be great.
We very much appreciate it.
Thank you, this means that the school fulfilled all those criteria in two spots, right?
Yes.
Two spots that they are already have some native habitats.
For the middle school, we kind of, not really cheated, but back in the day when that rain garden was built along Sheridan Road, although technically it's not your property, I was a Lake Bluff Park District commissioner at the time, so I was okay with this. But the school did, did build that with Lake Bluff Open Lands, so the kids helped build that.
It was the middle school, I remember that school. Yeah, yeah, I think my son thought through that one too.
So thank you very much for your time.
We will take those back to our schools. We have them permanently. You have enough. And, and Lisa, did you get this book yet? No. So here's her gift to you and pass it on to others. Okay. Thank you so much.
That was great, educational, fantastic. Okay, so next up, we have a new staff video, very excited.
Yeah, so in the past, we've invited our new staff members, but it's really been quick and we thought this would be a nicer way to introduce all of our new staff to you and the community.
Hi, I'm Ally Craig, I'm going to be a fourth grade teacher this year. In my free time, I love hanging out with my chat and baking and I'm so excited to join the Lake Bluff community and be a part of the community that really honors.
Everybody, my name is Amanda Suarez and I'm excited to be our new student support specialist, supporting both buildings. I live in Lake Bluff with my husband and my son and love living in the Lake Bluff community and I am excited to support our.
Hi, I'm Alex, I'm going to be a fourth grade teacher this year. In my free time, I love hanging out with my chat and baking and I'm so excited to join the Lake Bluff community and be a part of the community that really honors.
Everybody, my name is Amanda Suarez and I'm excited to be our new student support specialist, supporting both buildings. I live in Lake Bluff with my husband and my son and love living in the Lake Bluff community and I'm excited to see some of the other guys.
I am Barbara Fox, I am.
I'm Kathy Sullivan, as our little scientist. I went back to school for nursing, my kids were all little, so I have a son who got real sick and I just really, greatly benefited from excellent nursing care for him and how much action they showed and it just made me gain some interest in helping others through that saving role. What I'm excited about here is to meet the kids, really, I just really enjoy students.
Hey there, I'm the new faculty at Lake Bluff Elementary School, going to be a fifth year. I'm excited to serve the families and students of Lake Bluff. Good to see you.
Hi, my name is Brian Osmond, maybe we should change that for this year, I'll be there. Very excited to be in the practice starting sixth year of education, but my first year with my own class. Fun fact about me is if I'm here at school, I'm slightly traveling from window seat preferred. Just taking part in the world and seeing what I'm second in the best, I really do.
My name is Tru Bennett, I'm a professional student. Fun fact about me is I worked for 10 years, so I want to come back for the kids. What I'm most excited about is seeing some kids from our new job in sports, being able to see some kids.
Hi, I'm Carol Lady, I'm going to be taking third for you this year. Something about me is that I really like to bake in my free time and go on a walk and I'm so excited to go and welcome.
Hello everyone, my name is Alex, I'm going to be a nurse at my school, this is my ninth year.
Kathy Sullivan is a middle school nurse, so that I went back to school for nursing, my kids were real little, so I'm not saying I got real sick and I just really greatly benefited from excellent nursing care for him and how much action they showed and it just made me gain such an interest in helping others through that saving role. What I'm excited about here is to meet the kids, really, I just really enjoy students.
And I'm really excited to start working with the kids.
I'm a professional as well.
Excited to be working with an enthusiastic team to create a meaningful school.
I want to help and help the kids, make the kids better.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Loy, I'm going to be a care professional at Lake Bluff Elementary School, I'm a mom of two and I have a great love for life. I'm most excited to be working with an enthusiastic team to create an inclusive and inspiring learning environment.
Hello, I'm Jonna Mossbacher, I am going to be acting as a care professional there. I am excited beyond belief to be back at Lake Bluff Elementary. We have a wonderful, long-time relationship with. We have a wonderful, long time relationship with Lake Bluff Schools. I was a parent. I was a Lions复习部的成员. I was a substitute teacher and I've served as a care professional before as well. I am just so excited to be working with the incredible dedicated staff at Lake Bluff who are always striving for excellence, always striving to meet individual needs.
Hi, my name is Katie Burger and I'm going to be teaching fourth grade this upcoming year. And something about me is this summer I was helping coach a dance team and standing. And something I'm excited about for District 65 is to get to know the community a little bit better.
Hi, my name is Macy Klausing. I'm a new care professional at Lake Bluff Elementary. One fun fact about myself is that I'm in eighth grade. And I'm really excited to start working with the kids.
Hi, my name is Olivia Quincy and I will be teaching kindergarten. This will be my fourth year teaching. I live in Abbotson with my husband and dog. I am most excited to nurture the development of my students and their growth and to work with a great team of teachers.
Hi, my name is Olivia Capicella. I will be teaching fourth grade. I just moved here from New Jersey and I got married in Italy this past summer. I am super excited to work with a great team and also team.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Chagas and I'm going to be teaching third grade at the elementary school this year. A fun fact about me is that I speak Portuguese. And I'm most excited about joining the team to work on a highly collaborative.
Hi, I'm Tara Caldwell. I'm the new health teacher at the middle school. I spent the last 10 years teaching and working in the medical field and the ecology unit. And I'm excited to build relationships with students and help them reach their goals.
Hi, I'm Tabby Taglia. I'm coming back to Lake Bluff as a paraprofessional. Interesting fact about me was I taught in this school building for nine to 10 years. And I'm really excited to be back.
Well, that's wonderful. That's a great way to do that. And that will be available, I think, online. All right, next up is Jackie. We're going to talk about advanced learning services. All right. With advanced learning services. This is an update on a portion of our enrichment services, previously enrichment services. And I'll get into a little bit more of that. So just some background on what we've historically called enrichment services, but we're sort of expanding the names of. There is a state law that requires services for our advanced learners within the school district. Historically, in Lake Bluff, we've had some different models that we've approached this with. We've had enrichment programming, advanced learning programming, school-wide enrichment. But there's been a lot of variation over the years depending on where there might be big kind of groups of students, what our resources were as far as staffing, and just a lot of variation. So in 2023, 24, we did have our audit with the Center for Talent Development through North Eastern. And through that, one thing was really clear that we needed to have more structure and consistency in our programming. So we've been spending the last couple of years kind of targeting different areas. We've looked at some of the neighboring district models in the area and what their programming looks like for these students. And talked and looked into what best practices. So we learned that best practices, that's something not too broad. And that we really haven't been targeted enough at those truly advanced learners. So we do now have a new model that we're continuing to work through. This is a continuation of our enrichment for all programming that has been really important to the philosophy of our school district over time. So we do still have this enrichment for all. But we're also now identifying targeted services for outlier students. So these are truly advanced learners that are what we would consider working far beyond the grade level. So why this work matters? Because we believe every student deserves to have the right level of challenge and to grow and learn within a school year. Just because a student might be already performing at an advanced level doesn't mean that they should be remaining static. Most students though do thrive with a strong grade level instruction. So the work that we've been doing on our guaranteed and viable curriculum will really just enhance learning for all students in the grade level. Yet still, there's going to be outliers within our programming, students that are working far beyond grade level. And that's what this advanced learning programming will really target. Those students that are truly still, even with a rigorous curriculum, working beyond what our grade level expectations would be. So again, targeting these services so that we're preventing kind of a diluted rigor, misuse of resources and really targeting what it is that students are needing. So again, coming back to some of those guiding principles that have been historically important to us as a district. We wanted to stay away from any really strong labels. We want to provide services for students that need them, but not start to label students as gifted or talented. Some districts do kind of fall into that. Our concern with that is that we don't want to get into a position where we're tracking students for labeling them really early on in their education career. That can cause a lot of challenges as a culture. We want to really look at students from a profile perspective. So not just one data point, but looking holistically at the students through a variety of data points and really looking at them and profile the learning that they are. We want to acknowledge that advanced potential can exist in a variety of backgrounds. So providing services that aren't just targeted in one way, but that maybe pulls that student's different strengths. And also, we want to have a flexible placement that can be reviewed annually. So again, we want to really stay away from tracking and determining that if student is an advanced learner at a certain grade level and therefore the store is closed. We want to make sure that we're keeping options open for students to come in and out of programming. So coming out of the Center for Talent Development audit a couple of years ago, one of the things that they had identified was a blended model for programming. So again, this is our school-wide enrichment. So that is something that we're continuing. That's the kindergarten through picture and science and social studies programming for enrichment services. And that's also going to begin to expand into the middle school a bit. But then also having really targeted instruction and acceleration opportunities for students that again are operating beyond the grade level. That profile-based student identification was a recommendation that came out of the audit. So again, looking at students holistically, not just taking one data point and carrying that through all the way through their this time here with us. It was recommended that we extend math acceleration into fourth and fifth grade, which is something that we've done over the last couple of years. Explore options in ELA, which is something I'll get to in a moment. And then again, a clear continuum of services. So these are some of the things that we're continuing to address and kind of making our way through those recommendations. So we have our group of, or our area of services for all students, kindergarten through fifth grade. This is what we're still continuing to refer to as enrichment. This began in the fall of 2024. This is that weekly science and social studies enrichment blocks. When we're looking at enrichment, it's not just teaching the science and social studies standards, but we're really trying to focus on how we can create engaging experiences for students that are hands-on. Thinking about things like citizenship, critical thinking and communication, which are the foundations of that program. Those are tied to the portrait of a learner that was designed through the strategic plan process. Having a lot of field experiences. So we have worked with Lake Bluff and Lake Forest Open Lands. Field experiences for students that help them connect to the community that they're a part of. And then new for this year, we are working on enrichment portfolios for families to have a better understanding of what it is that students are doing during this time. So those are services that are still going to be provided for all students. We're still referring to that as enrichment. And then we're moving to also have an advanced learning opportunity for students. So this is going to look different depending on the grade level. But we've identified that in grades three through five, beginning this fall, we're going to have a small group pull-out program opportunity for students. And these are students who are operating truly beyond the grade level, true outliers. So we've worked with looking at data from area districts, what are some other programs? What could this look like for us? And what would work with the parameters of our resources? The students we have in front of us, the times we have available and everything that we, we have to work with. So this is going to be small group pull-out, two times a week. There is going to be an ELA program and then also a math program. Students could qualify for both. They could qualify for one and not the other. It's truly going to depend on their profile as a learner. This instruction will be delivered by the enrichment specialist. We're going to be doing identification this fall. We have our math scores that we're still start continuing to gather. We have some makeups that will occur over the next couple of weeks. And then COGAT, which is a cognitive abilities test that occurs in third grade. That assessment will take place next week. So we'll begin identification and then families will be notified directly of this opportunity. And the instruction will be aligned to advanced reading skills. So we'll really be pushing beyond what the grade level standards are, having kids think more deeply and complexly. It's going to vary a little bit by grade level. And it's also going to be a little, an element to students taking the lead and looking at what it is that the students are truly interested in and an inquiry-based approach. This is what the SASS for identification is going to look like. So we've created very clear guidelines, looking at historical data within our district, looking at area districts and what some of the norms are. This is, there's still some opportunities for flexibility within this though. So you'll see that grade three through five, this is where their achievement could be in math and/or COGAT. It's in four, so they don't need to have both of these. But if we have two scores within the last year in the math assessment that fall within the 95th percentile or above, that would qualify a student automatically for these services. We've got some cognitive ability scores, quantitatives associated with high math abilities, verbal with ELA. And then we also have students who don't meet these criteria. We want to make sure that we're also considering other factors. So there's still opportunity for students, even if they don't meet these criteria. We can dig into teacher input, other classroom performance, because we know not all students ask well. We can also look at COGAT composite. Nonverbal is also an area where if a student is showing us really strong nonverbal skills, that's something that might make up a profile of a learner that might need some advanced experiences. And we can also dig into our IAR, IAR assessments, which come back from the state and then placement tests. So then in grades kindergarten through second grade, we think it's very important for students to remain in their classrooms as much as possible. Young learners are still learning how to be in the community of their school, of their classroom. And so we feel that the instruction is that's delivered by the classroom teacher in partnership with enrichment specialists. So this will be similar to the model that we've had in the past, which is really pushing and having support provided within the classroom. Services being provided by the classroom teacher as much as possible with the enrichment team supporting the teachers in the planning of what that instruction looks like. So this could include curriculum compacting, additional experiences that might extend students beyond the curriculum. And then also supporting with any family inquiries, how can we help our students at home? Are you aware of any opportunities that might benefit students and things of that nature? So again, just kind of an overview of the continuum. We kind of have that middle bubble, which is all students kindergarten through fifth grade are still going to be experiencing weekly enrichment in science and social studies and field experiences. So that enrichment for all component, that's historically just been a really big part of the Lake Bluff enrichment programming. But then on the out, on the outer ring, also we have different experiences available for students that might be presenting the need for advanced learning opportunities. So we've got our, some kindergarten through second graders might be receiving advanced learning in small groups within their classroom. Some third through fifth graders will have those pull-out groups in ELA. Some fourth and fifth graders have an accelerated math class opportunity, which again, there's entry points at fourth grade, at fifth grade, again at sixth grade and continues through the middle school. And then some third graders have the advanced learning pull-out math groups. So goals for this year are to continue to build on a culture where every child is feeling challenged and supported. That's something that's very important that all children are learning and growing each year within our school walls, that we can monitor and refine our services at LBEAS. So this is where a starting place, but of course, we'll continue to evaluate and determine if it truly is meeting the needs of our students. Providing that targeted instruction for students that are true outliers and working beyond the grade level. We really want to focus on increasing family communication. And then also beginning some school-wide experiences at the middle school level. Our goal for this year is that there will be one field experience or kind of external experience for students at each grade level. And then we'll build from there. Again, just want to reiterate the commitment to excellence and moving all students forward. We feel like this model really ensures enrichment for all and is well-aligned to the CTE recommendations that we received. Want to make sure that our advanced learners are also receiving that challenge that they need and balancing our resources so that we can really move students forward. Any questions? Thank you. Yeah, please.
This is wonderful information and very helpful. So thank you.
If a child is truly an outlier and they, you know, their test scores show that or their teacher knows that or whatever, we then let the parents know that they are eligible for this opportunity. Are we instantly slotting them into this opportunity? Is it optional by the family? How does that? That's a great question. Families can opt out if it's something that they don't feel that they would want their students to be a part of it. We are putting into place learning contracts with the students just as far as an agreement that this time is a sacred time and we want students to be engaged and participating in a way that would continue their learning. But there, the expectation, I would assume most families would happily jump at the opportunity. However, if this family felt like it wasn't the right fit for their student for a variety of reasons, it wouldn't be something that they were forced into.
There's like very clear guidelines of, you know, you meet this, how will that be communicated to families? Like even if they, their child may not meet them, but just so they're aware that the district has.
It is on the website as of today. So that's something we've been working really hard towards the last couple of years, including their math placement as well, having really clear criteria so that it isn't murky and so that there is very clear kind of line from the sand of what students are qualifying. Obviously, we want to provide those opportunities if we really do think that a student isn't meeting criteria because of one bad task or we would never hold a child back. More often than not, it's helpful to have students moving forward at a quicker pace. But also, we want to make sure students are successful. That's our biggest job is to make sure that students are experiencing the best.
Thank you.
And when you say field experience, what do you mean?
Sure. I would say anything outside of the school walls. So one of the, the program that we're looking at for our eighth grade students is the Lake County Regional Office has put on a career fair that started last year. So we'll be taking our eighth graders to a, it's at Lake County Fairgrounds. And it's a career fair where they have people coming from all sorts of fields. There's people in the medical field, people in farming, people in tech, people in welding, people in all sorts of places. And students can kind of explore what some of these career paths can look like. Let's getting students outside of the building in their community. At the elementary, some of those experiences are, like I said, very open lands tied so far is what we've had. So they've done like a redeeming field trip or walking even the grounds at the elementary building and kind of being exposed to what some of the native plants and animals are in that area. Continuing to expand potentially into parks and culture.
And you said that we'll continue to do those experiences for all kids in enrichment as well.
Yes, yes. Those are, those are experiences that we want to continue to expand for all students. Anything else? Thank you, Jackie. It's great information. I'm up again. All right. We'll let you take the lead. GVTC launch. All right, here we go. So guaranteed viable, transparent curriculum. Tying back to our mission, vision and motto, this is a big component. This is a big outcome, I would say, of our strategic plans. So really thinking about ensuring that academic achievement and personal growth for students and the educational opportunities that they have. The inclusive community of motivated learners and excellence in education enthusiasm for life, every student, every day. It's very closely tied to our goal one of our strategic plan. And it was the first strategy that fell into this goal again of providing innovative educational programming for students. Was our goal to develop and implement with fidelity, a guaranteed viable and transparent curriculum. So when we're talking about GVTC, the guarantee is the essential content identified for every grade level and every course. So that's the work that we've been doing over the past couple of years with, with our staff, primarily focused at this point on our ELA and math. And that's to make sure we have equitable access and opportunities for our students. So it doesn't really matter what classroom they're in. It really is just a similar experience that they would receive across grade levels or similar pledge that they would obtain. The viability is thinking through what, what can actually be taught in the time that we have here with students, in the hours that we have available to us, knowing all of the standards, all of the expectations, all of the mandates and all of the needs of our students. What can we do in the instructional time that we have within our school day? And then the transparent component of this is the internal within our school district. How can we talk about, again, that kind of equal access to curriculum across classrooms? And also, what are those guarantees that, for example, if a second grade teacher coming in wants to know what the expectation was for their student that they've just met? They can look back and kind of understand, okay, historically, this is what they would have done in kindergarten and first grade. The public transparency component of this is that clear communication with families and community that continues to be something that we want to reach towards. So why is this important? This is a quote that I use all the time. You'll see it on the website that I'll show you in a minute. But Marzano, one of the top leaders in educational research. This is something that is considered to be one of the number one school level factors. I think it's schools in control that impacts student achievement. We believe every student deserves access to high-quality learning. This in God ensures equity. We really believe that it builds that clarity, not just within our walls, but also externally and will support our long-term growth. So the process of getting here, so there are the points that we're at now, I should say. So the process of getting here so far, the points that we're at now, I should say, another world that is ending. It's been a collaborative district-wide effort. We have staff that's dedicated countless hours through some really sometimes hard conversations where we've really had to do some really deep digging into what standards are, what, what they mean, what is important to us? What do we really think is the prioritization of, of skills and things that we want our students to walk away with? Not always easy, but it's definitely what we believe is what's best for students. And so I think our result is a pretty strong foundation for student learning. The framework that you'll see that will be shared with the public, it's on our website now, is an understanding by design framework. There's a lot of different curricular frameworks that exist out there, a lot of different processes. The one that we have been utilizing is understanding by design or also called backward design. Kind of planning what the end in mind, what is it that we want students to know and be able to do? And let's talk about that and be very solid in that. And then you kind of backward plan into what does that really mean? What does that look like? What are those big kind of transfer goals? We call them things that we want students to do beyond the school walls, big understandings, things that students are carrying forward in their day-to-day life. The essential questions which you'll see are thought-provoking questions. These aren't questions that students can say yes or no to or that have a correct answer. They're things that are really big picture and more, more, have more depth to them. The knowledge and skills, these are probably the things that people can kind of sink their teeth into a little bit more. These are the more tangible facts, concepts, vocabulary, things that we can expect students to demonstrate or could probably ask them or that you might see on an assessment. So just to understand what this will look like in classrooms, we are looking for curriculum that's aligned and consistent, but not scripted. So if you're walking into one third grade classroom, you might see content being taught in one style. And if you walk next door, it might be similar content, but with a different style. And we value that. We want our teachers to have some creativity and autonomy to how they're working with their students. It builds the relationship. It's much more authentic. But what we want to be really consistent on is what are those aligned goals that students are, the things are able to do and the knowledge that they have. So again, there might be different experiences. There might be a style that works for one teacher and a different style that works for another. And many anecdotes that I share, like overly share probably with staff in meetings about like my personal examples of these things, things that I just couldn't do the script and other times where I loved the script. So I, we really want to provide that autonomy and creativity and style. But again, we want those core expectations that people can really kind of hang their hat on. Really important things to note, we will continue to be guided by the standards. So we always are coming back to the common core standards. Those are outlined for us by the stage. That is what our regulations are aligned to. But also this is all living and evolving. I was in meetings today with first and second grade teams and we already started changing what you're going to see here. And those will be live by the end of the week. This is something that's got to be responsive to student needs. We have to be reflective. We have to be looking at our assessments and making sure that we're still following through is what our partners are needing right now. So again, our staff's kind of constantly looking at new research. We're gathering feedback. We're thinking about the students and from us, none of this is going to ever be final. We'll continue to move forward, but there's constantly going to be shifts in the work that happens. So this is our landing page on the website. This just kind of summarizes some of the points that I've made in this presentation. And then here you can click to see our curriculum blueprint. So it's in each of these subject areas, you're able to click in. So if you wanted to explore ELA, you can pick a grade level. You can then see some of the core subject areas. There is some overlap because within ELA, there might be a unit of study that is both reading and phonics or writing and reading. So there is some overlap, but if you're curious about what those standards are and how they are taught, this is where you would dig into that. So if you were curious about kindergarten phonics, you can read a brief overview. We have some kind of core end of, end of the year skills that you could expect in this grade level. And then you can also dig into some of the specific units. So this is our first unit for phonics instruction in kindergarten, making friends with letters. You can see a brief summary. We have our established goals. So these are kind of the common core, the teacher language. We have our long-term transfer goals. Those are the big picture goals that we want students to independently do, how they're making meaning of those established goals that we've identified, those essential questions, which again, might not be something that a student can readily answer yes or no to, but kind of that big picture question that they're thinking about. And then our knowledge and skills. So those are the things that are a little bit more tangible, right? Like being able to name all upper and lower case letters. And you can flip back, dig into math. If you're curious about fourth grade, then again, you can dig into specific units and get a sense of what's happening. Three fractions and decimals. So this is something that our teachers are going to continue to be referring back to. Again, we already are starting to dig into like, all right, what are our knowledge and skills for this unit? How are we going to know if students are there or what are we going to do if they're not? So this is a reference point for the community, a reference point for our staff. And it's again, something that we're continuing to evolve. Coming back to the curriculum creation. Again, this is just a starting place, a communication tool to help the community understand what our core curriculum is. But for specific questions about a child's experience, teachers are always the best resource. But together, we really want to make sure that we have students that are learning and having what they need to thrive here. So for our next steps, we've got obviously like coming back to that continuous reflection component, continuing to evolve and improve upon this curriculum, ongoing collaboration across the district. And now our focus this year in our release time with teachers is really shifting towards assessments. How are we really assessing what students are able to do and what are we doing with that information? So really talking more about data now that we have really clear goals and guidance, digging into how are we really evaluating how it's going? And I just want to give a shout out to all of our teachers and staff. This has been not a easy path. They have put in countless, countless, countless hours, had incredibly thoughtful dialogue, show true commitment to our students every day. Just really have had meaningful conversations, tough conversations, come back with research, come back with information, come back with best practices or ideas and really just always showing a student service center. So definitely thank a teacher.
And thank you too. This is an incredible. And it's really impressive to see and a really great resource. So thank you.
Yeah, it's not done. Like I said, ELA math is really the foundation right now. We're continuing out to expand into other areas. Got the time arts teams are ready to go. Our wellness team is eager and jumping at the bit. Studies, it's components of it. We want to continue to refine it, world language.
Will we push out? I think that landing page is awesome. Will we push that out to parents just so they?
Yeah.
I can a weekly update email the co-sponsors.
The community newsletter will happen.
Maybe we can have principal update too.
Yeah, I just think it'd be helpful just to know.
Sure, absolutely.
Would you mind just really quickly explaining like, how does a resource fit into that?
Oh, yes. So curricular resources are a great starting place. They have more content than would be possibly usable for our school day. There's a lot of research about like the amount of content that goes into a curricular resource. And it might claim that it's 16 minutes a day for the school year. I don't know what school those people work in because we have a lot of hours with our children here and it's still far beyond that. Some research shows that it's actually has like two years of content instead of the one year that it claims to have. So while those resources are a great starting point, they're not the answer. And also they don't meet the needs of all students, right? They're not differentiated. They don't know what kids are already coming in with. So for some students, if you were done in or repetitive, for other students, it might be starting at a place that they need a lot of background knowledge to even get to that point. So curricular resources are really valuable and helpful. Our teachers are really very savvy at pulling from a variety of resources. Today I was again, working with, we started our release time this week and our first and second grade teams, like showing all the resources that they use. And it's, it's amazing how many places these teachers are familiar with, savvy with, able to pull up something at the like drop of a hat and they know what to reference and they know what, how to help students move forward based on the standard or based on that learning target. Resources are nice to have, but they don't do the job.
Thanks for that. Any other questions, Richard?
Thank you.
I, I think it's, I mean, I mean, that's incredible out there, you know, and through the website. Teachers, parents, everybody accesses all that information. Nothing like that's really been out there before, has it? Or is it?
And not very many districts have anything like this. I've worked.
But I'm especially impressed with the level of detail on that. That is, that is very impressive.
Yeah, I mean, that's the level of detail, the conversations that are happening about student learning.
It's amazing. It's wonderful.
So I'm sorry, you're also like updating it weekly?
I mean, if like, yeah. It's, I, I wouldn't say like check back every week for updates to the little nuances. The example that we had today was something said for first grade, students will use punctuation. We're like, that is so vague. What do we mean by punctuation in first grade? Like what is a first grade punctuation, you know, what does that mean at this point in the year? And we're like, we need to really refine what that says because that's not necessarily an accurate portrayal. We mean they can use periods at the end of a sentence. So I think that like now we're like, kind of like digging more into like really rereading some of it and saying like, okay, this is actually what we meant. So little updates like that though, at the middle school with the updated schedule, there's a lot of shifts that are continuing to happen. So you'll see for some of those units, we're only through to winter break because they want to evaluate student needs and continue to refine what those units look like after winter break based on the data that we have in front of us. Yeah.
It's huge. Thanks, Jackie. Thank you, Jackie. And thank you to the board for supporting the enrichment and release time because a lot of the work is being done at that with Jackie's issue. I think it's amazing to see how much work has been done in a school year, right? I mean, yeah. But I mean, the fact that that the pullout time was new last school.
Yep. And even some of those times were not necessarily this. It was working on a variety of things. Professional development happens during that time. Class placement is happening during that time. So it's, yeah.
It's very valuable.
It is, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, I think this is, I lost my place, but Mr. Blackmore, I think you're up next. Oh, yes, e-bike safety. We did miss an opportunity. Yeah.
I, I don't have a presentation for you tonight, but definitely wanted to give you an update on how things are looking as far as the start of school year goes as it relates to not just e-bikes, but also some of the scooters, skateboards. The weather has been outstanding. We have had a huge number of kids, you know, getting to school on one of those devices. I should also back up to say that we brought in a Lake Bluff police officer in the spring to talk to all of our students and just outline the laws and regulations that they're held accountable to. I've also done a lot of sharing of that communication with parents through the principals' updates, just so that they understand that there are some bikes that kids are allowed to ride and others that they aren't. And having to do with the size of the motor, whether it has pedals. The big issue for a lot of communities along the North Shore has more to do with bikes that fall into the category of motorized cycles, like electric dirt bikes. We had some students that were riding those to school last year. I'm pleased to report that we don't have anyone that's riding those right now. And in fact, if you've noticed, our, our students, as they arrive and depart at the end of the day, we're at about 99% compliance with elements. I, I can't say for certain that they're leaving their house with the helmets on, but I know that as they get closer to school, they, they get put on because they know that I'm going to be out there and asking about it. My, my hope is that they're riding and wearing them both to and from. We have had students with some significant head injuries as a result of accidents, either to and from school or in their own free time, and we know that helmets help reduce the risk. So we're really pushing that. I also want to thank the board and Jay for helping make it a reality. We increased our bike parking last year when we redid the parking lot. And at first I thought it was excessive, but we measured it out and, and, and we did it. And sure enough, those bikes are, those Rastan utilize every day. Got nice weather. So the other thing that we've done is really, and I've got students who can attest to this back there, worked with our kids to remind them that as they approach school before crossing the road onto school property, they're walking the bikes and really that's an intent to get everybody going the same speed as they get in the heavily congested areas around school and trying to make sure that we're not crashing into one another. Because as we know, those bikes do go quite fast. So if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them, but I'm just coming to you with a really positive report. And please, at the way that the students have responded to our attempts to kind of welcome them on their personal vehicles, but also do it in a way that's safer.
Do you like positive reports?
Yeah, I'm happy to do it. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Miss. Jay, you're up next with debt service month balance cleanup.
I do not have a presentation either. I'm just checking back in from, on this presentation when I was speaking. Where she described the debt service cleanout, essentially we have funds accumulating with debt service fund as a result of the county lending a little bit extra money to make sure that if they don't collect it all, they can still pay our debt service payments as well as continuation. And the only way to actually get that money and use it is to issue bonds without issuing taxes, but paying the bonds off of the debt service account and then moving that money over to funding the community. Before I ask town, do you have, where's the, we can do a lot of additional work. I just wanted to see if there are any objections from the board to proceeding with this next meeting.
Okay, yeah, does anybody have anything that they wanted to talk about? I know we got to see the presentation and talk a little bit last time, but we didn't really come out and sort of formal answer about anything. I personally, it sounds like a good idea to me. I have no objection to it. Does anyone else have any questions or thoughts or concerns?
Next meeting will bring a resolution and not a kind of formal approval.
Great. Thank you. Dr. Layali, you're up.
Yeah, we talked about this briefly at the last meeting. We have a draft of all the presentations that the board will be seeing for the rest of the year. We sent it out to everyone, tried to get some feedback. I think at this point, it reflects kind of what our current thinking is about what you're going to see for the rest of our meetings. There is some in there in April, I think, for any additional items that people want to add before the end of the year. But at this point, we're just going to go ahead and put it on the board website. So the community can have access to the draft, knowing that some, some of these things may be moved around, but this is generally speaking, when we're going to be reporting on things to the board.
That's great. Thank you.
So things like, you know, the budget approval and all of those things.
We didn't put those in. I could include those.
Oh, I understand. Yeah, so.
Yeah, those are the annual reports. These are kind of like the special reports that don't happen every year necessarily. We can add those, the tentative budget and like.
The meeting in two weeks is, we have to approve the budget.
Yes, the tentative. Yeah. Sorry, the past, the final, that'll be the third time we've seen it? Third, I can't, because I know you always talk about it in the spring and then we talk about it again later in the spring.
Well, we did the tentative budget, I think, in spring and then just this will be the first time for the final.
Right. I don't think there's been any.
No, so, so this isn't an exhaustive list about what we're covering.
Good point. These are just the things we're adding in to, but in addition to the annual, we get already. But we could make it into an exhaustive list.
We could do that.
Yes. Any other questions on that?
For the spring and fall recognition and reception, is that like everything lumped together? Is that, if we have things?
Yeah, if we have things to do.
We're kind of still in figuring that one out, I think. While we see what the thrill share is and if we want to invite people who have gotten the recognition, we can consider doing that. It's just a placeholder.
Yeah, we do need to keep thinking about that. I love the idea of recognition. I don't love the idea of inviting people to have to come, spend extra time at the school for five minutes.
Yeah.
But yes, let's continue to work on that. Would you like to update us on?
I would love to. So give me one second. So. My, I'm going to project. Here we go. Okay, so. We've been talking since the spring about through north and the fact that.
we've been talking since the spring about True North and the fact that unfortunately, over the last couple of years, or maybe more than a couple of years, some districts have felt really frustrated with the organization and have started to put in their intent to withdraw and start to go through that process. And then towards the end of last school year, because these districts were pulling out, we got to the point where all of the districts put in their intent to withdraw because we were worried about being the last ones in the cooperative. So as you know, we've been working on this. This presentation that I'm going to give you in short tonight will be presented to the Leadership Council of True North tomorrow. Laura Breakstone has already seen it. She's our Leadership Council Representative. And we're hoping that we're on a good path now towards it instead of a dissolution, a reorganization. So out of that, out of that process, where everyone put in their intent, we had some groups emerge and we're going to go through kind of all of these topics really quickly tonight. So we have, as you remember, a few different attorney groups that have been working of the 18 districts. We were part of a group that was represented by forensic. And out of that group, there was a subcommittee that formed to start studying dissolution. And out of that group, a smaller subcommittee decided we would tackle perhaps a reimagination. So this is now the out, outgrowth of all of that work put together into one plan that we'll be presenting to the Leadership Council tomorrow. Originally, it was going to be two plans. We've now merged the whole thing into one way forward that we think is going to make sense. So this reorganization, reorganization committee was going to provide an alternative future, right? And so we got to one singular pathway that we feel will meet the most needs of all the member districts at this time. We held a lot of meetings. We did surveys, feedback sessions with superintendents, directors of special education. We looked at other cooperatives and financial structures. And we learned that there is still among the 18 districts a demand for services. Program priorities are still a necessity. So almost all districts indicated that they still wanted some type of programming for their students, either in the form of Arbor or North Shore Academy Elementary or Middle and High School. But more importantly than all of that, there, there was an importance that we heard from all member districts on reestablishing trust, working on communication and making sure that we're collaborating well. So I'm not going to go through all these people, but just know that in here are dedicated superintendents, dedicated directors and assistant superintendents of student services. The admin of True North has supported us as needed and some CSBOs throughout the cooperative, including, I would highlight Tracy, as somebody who worked, is, is just like, was critical to the effort of rebuilding this cooperative. And credit to J2 for being a sounding board for me on the CSBO end as we tried to work through and really actually build this thing back up from the ground. So the highlights. This reorganization includes no more membership fees for any member district. So as we used to pay a membership fee or an, and an operations and maintenance fee and a professional development fee, those fees all go away. I'll explain in a second. We're then going to move to consolidating all the programs to one therapeutic day school that will serve students EC through 12th grade. And then we're also presenting a restructured leadership governance and staffing model for the organization. So the thing, single therapeutic day school is recommended to support students with significant challenges. We're looking at making sure that the school is high quality and has the unique academic instruction along with the therapies and small class size and specialized staff that these students need. We are going to be asking school districts that are currently contracting a full-time equivalent position through True North to consider moving those people back to their own district. So some districts would say, we need a full-time speech and language pathologist. True North, can you hire that person for us? But we'll have them in our district full time. True North will no longer be acting as a middleman sort of staffing agency. We're asking that those districts that have the full-time equivalent people just move them back or consider moving them back to their district. We will continue True North. We are recommended that they continue to offer itinerant and specialized services, but no financial obligation unless they are actually utilized. So before, we might pay to make sure that those things were available. This will now be billed directly to districts that are utilizing those services. So in lieu of the membership fees, districts will be charged tuition and delivery fees, service delivery fees that incorporate the total cost of providing the services. So all of the fees of building the school will go into a per student tuition cost. And so all district will know that they aren't paying for anything extra. They're paying for just what it takes to run the school. At the time that we put this all together, we acknowledge that some member districts were likely going to consider pursuing withdrawal even after this. But at this time, as of today, almost all of the districts have committed to staying with True North. And so this plan is really, right now, looking to meet the most needs that we could meet of all, almost all 18 districts. But if many decide after tomorrow night that they decide to not remain as a member, then we might not be able to run this plan, but I don't think that that's going to happen. I think that we have enough of a commitment from everyone. So tomorrow night, we'll present this to the Leadership Council. In October, we will do a first reading of the actual proposed changes to the Articles of Agreement. And we're going to be doing that in expedited fashion. So we'll be waiving a 60-day requirement to amend the articles. We will give any information back to the member districts that they asked for after tomorrow night. And then we're going to be asking that in November, districts tell us whether they still intend to withdraw or they intend to stay. By November, we'd like to approve the Articles of Agreement. We would like to get everyone's commitment to stay or continue to withdraw. And then the Leadership Council would be taking official action on either reorganizing or dissolving at the December meeting. And then in January, we start to find new governance structure. So some of this work will take place starting in January. Some of the changes will take place if we go down this path. This whole slide really just has to do with changing the culture and making sure that we're addressing the needs of kids above and beyond anything that this organization addresses the needs of the students that it's designed to serve. And so we are going to be looking at high-impact programming, moving professional development to work with the teachers at True North, building and gaining deep expertise across the organization and really making sure that the administrators in the member districts understand what's happening at True North, which unfortunately, I think, was a little bit of a misstep for us and how we wound up in the situation we were in in the spring. So the therapeutic day school, there's a lot of information on here, but essentially what it means is we're going to be combining the Arbor program, North Shore Academy, East, uh, North Shore Academy Elementary, Middle and High School into this one school that will be providing what students need who attend at that school. That's basically what this says, that everything the students need who, who go to that therapeutic day school will have what they need. Some things of note, we will be providing transition services for students who attend North Shore Academy up to age of 22, but we will not be providing those standalone services for, for like students that are still attending their home district. So we're kind of eliminating the standalone transition services. It will continue to be housed where True North is housed now, and we're creating this just for our member districts. We have had non-members. We probably will continue to have non-members, but what we're building is just for the member districts. So a lot of information on here, but I'm just going to put some highlights. So everything stays the same for this school year. The remainder of the school year, everything stays the same. At the end of this school year, a couple of programs are going to sunset, Supported Learning Environment and Standalone ESY. So those are, the one SLE program has already been moved out into another district. So we're just going to have that district to sort of take it over. And then the extended school year, we will sunset at the end of this year. Next year, at the end of next year, those transition services for students who are not at NSA will also sunset. That really only impacts our high school districts, but almost all of the rest of the services will merge into that one school and we'll be able to continue offering early childhood as well. We will continue to provide contracted specialized services. That's when like small districts like us can't necessarily hire a full-time person to do, say, speech and language. We might just need a .6. This is where True North helps a district like ours. They would give us a .6 and give a .2 to another small district and a .2 to another small district, and then they house that 1.0. That's really helpful for small districts like us. We're still going to be able to do that. The big change is True North will be asking for a two-year commitment for those, for those staffing situations so that they can have some predictability. And they will also provide substitute coverage, which they haven't been able to do in the past. The big change here is we're not guarantee, we would not be asking True North to guarantee anything. We, if we have a change mid-year, we would not expect them to have staff to cover that change if we have additional kids. Or if we have students move out of our program, we might not, we might still have to pay for it because we committed to it. So before, we were trying to do a lot of work to guarantee everyone getting what they need, but it was costing a lot of money and it was financially untenable. So at this point, we're just trying to be realistic about the fact that we're going to staff it for what we know in the spring. And then we may or may not be able to meet those needs if things happen in the middle of the year, which is what's happening now. Some other services, adaptive PE will sunset at the end of this year. A lot of districts, including ours, are already planning on being able to take that back in-house. But many of our services will continue to be able to offer. The LEA staffing is that piece of like hiring somebody for a district, but then maintaining them at True North. We're not going to be doing that anymore. And the big change here is also professional development coaching. That entire department is going to no longer exist as member districts need. From a financial standpoint, we're not going to be doing the membership fees, but like I said, all of the costs associated with offering whatever we offer within that school will be put into tuition costs per student. And then our evidence-based funding discount that we, we get an evidence-based funding allocation from the state as a cooperative, that would be given as a discount to all member districts per student for their tuition. So that is the benefit of membership. Maintaining a membership is that you have that discounted tuition with the EBF allocation. We might be able to allow other districts to join, but we really don't know what that will look like yet. We're going to look at that after reorganization. Because of the fact that all of the costs are going into tuition, tuition costs are going up a little bit. But one thing that Tracy and the team that were working on staffing were really careful about was, are we still competitive with other placements? And we are. We're still within that range. We'll be offering still a half-day and a full-day for the childhood program. As you know, that's not something we really take a lot of advantage of. We have our, most of ours in-house, but our K-12 tuition would look anywhere between 85,000 and 95,000 per year. It's pretty commensurate with other placements in the area. We would also have access to the tuition-based programs, or sorry, the services. And we would still do some type of true-up at the end of the year, which was like looking at what the member districts actually used as compared to their commitments that they made in the spring. And then the new governance structure would take a look at what they wanted to do with either an overage, you know, exceeding that revenue or not approaching the revenue. Non-member districts, if we can offer them placements, would have a non-member surcharge of 25%. That money would go into the cooperative to help support facilities and maintaining the programs that they have. So you're going to see in a second a chart of what the proposed cost savings would be. And this is just basically how did we get to these numbers? So the next chart includes all of the fees that we were assessed and looks at our highest enrollment in '24 or '25, '26. So just kind of taking the highest enrollment that we had at True North of the last two years and then multiplying it by the new tuition that we would have to kind of give us a very conservative estimate of if there's any cost savings that we would be having with this new model. You can see that for us, District 65, our total FY '26 costs are $654,000 approximately. The new model, given the enrollment that we had, the highest of the last two years enrollment would be, we'd be seeing savings of about $250,000. Again, that's pending what our enrollment is. If we have new students move in or not, or we need new services, this is all approximate. But as you can see, for the most part, almost every district sees substantial savings through this reorganization. A couple of districts will see a slight increase, and that's just based on the programs that they use and their current membership fees because they're one is a very small district and the other really only utilizes early childhood. And those costs actually up a little bit in this model. We'll be reorganizing the district office administration. Instead of having a superintendent, we'll be hiring an executive director just to kind of signify that the cooperative is supposed to be serving the 18 districts, not exist as kind of a separate entity. So we'll be seeking an executive director at some point. We're downsizing to only include a chief school business official, a director of student human resources and a director of programs and services. Again, this is more meaningful to the people that work at True North, but we're downsizing administration. And for you to know, we're also reorganizing the governance model. So according to school code, we still need to have a leadership council or a board that's made up of a board member of all the member districts, but they only need to meet twice a year. They can delegate the majority of their duties to what we're going to call an executive committee. That executive committee will be made up of all the member district superintendents. So a lot of the leadership and decision-making is going to be put on the member superintendents to be meeting monthly, in person, to make the decisions that we need to make for the cooperative so we don't wind up in this position again. Then the board members from each of the districts will meet twice a year to, to hear what's been going on at True North and to approve the things that they need to approve, budget, doing anything, you know, some financial situations, the hiring of the executive director, probably at the recommendation of that executive committee. We are stipulating that if a superintendent is unable to attend, they may send their student services administrator, but that person will not be able to post. So we're really looking for a commitment from our superintendents. If we're able to do this reorganization, we would change this governance structure in January so that we can really start to move forward with the reorganization. So big picture, benefits of maintaining and staying in True North, priority enrollment for high-quality programs in our community. We don't want to be sending kids far away. We want them close to us. So having this therapeutic day school close as well as our early childhood programs is a benefit as well as access to the specialized and contracted services that you'd only pay for if you use. Financial benefits, we're not paying. We have some districts who've been paying and not utilizing. That's not going to be an issue anymore. So beginning of, in July '26, we'll be eliminating those fees. If you stay a member, you'll have lower tuition and service rates compared to the non-members. And we won't lose the EBF credit. So the, the evidence-based funding credit comes to True North if we remain a cooperative. If we no longer remain a cooperative, that money doesn't go back to our member districts. It gets absorbed into the state and goes and is dispersed more likely to tier-one districts, districts that have a bigger gap between their foundational-based funding and what their communities are able to provide. If you stay as a member, if the district decides to stay a member, they would continue to own a portion of the assets. Tuition rates would increase, which means we will probably get an increased reimbursement as well. True North will still be able to support and guide us in state reporting, be able to provide us with some legislative updates and interpretation of special education law. So basically, we have a hub that will help us with special, special education issues. That's a benefit of being a member as well as a collective voice of the 18 districts and advocating for any legislative or advocacy issues that come up around the state. And the last thing is that True North really, as NSSED, was a leader in kind of bringing up special educators, directors of special education, creating a pipeline for our member districts to bring high-quality people, to have them trained at True North and then bring them onto our districts. We're hoping to recreate that. And then obviously, if you're a member, we will retain a seat on the governing board. The superintendent's time, the director's time and energy becomes our membership fee. We will be, you know, providing guidance to the cooperative, and that's part of membership. And then obviously, we will have a seat at the table when we put staffing plans into place. So in the spring months, when we're looking to staff the building, as a member, you will have the opportunity to get your students in there and have them in the staffing plan. If this plan weren't to go and we had to dissolve, some of the things that would be negatives for us, we would be competing with each other for existing therapeutic day placements in other schools around us, and those placements are getting harder and harder to find. We would lose the evidence-based funding allocation, 2.5 million, that benefits all of our 18 member districts. We would not recoup that money. We would need to pay our liabilities in full and we would need to dispose of all of our assets, selling the buildings, figuring out what to do with the fund balance and all of the actual property and plant and equipment. There would be a lot of probably need for legal advice and counsel and support with all that. That would be a lot of work to do. And as well, staff potentially would have access to positions in our own districts. And they would have to come to each of the member districts and be placed within our own districts, which obviously would be difficult for us to do as well. So if the reorganized, reorganization So if the reorganized, reorganization plan does not get the twelve votes that it needs to move forward, this is the position we're going to be in, and there are a lot of difficult things coming up for us if that doesn't work. We know that some districts may still want to leave. We know that what has been hard for districts to stay a member of True North is the financial obligation that they would have if they decided to leave. So in that current bylaws, a district would have to prepay their portion of liabilities, which equates to a pretty large check that they would have to write, which has prevented a lot of districts from leaving. So we have decided that if a district wants to leave now, we're going to eliminate that obligation. But then those districts also walk away from their right to any portion of the assets, facilities, the fund balance, and all those other things. And our CSBOs have kind of looked at that calculation for each district, and it doesn't look to be that huge of a difference. That's a calculation that each district would have to make. We've also decided that we would like to reimburse Glenview District Thirty-four for the audit that they've done. They have, as you know, Glenview was the first district that decided to go through the withdrawal process, the two-year process. They have been, at this point, through almost every step in that two-year process, they followed all the rules. And at this point, we're proposing to change the rules, and we feel like that is an unfortunate situation that they're in. And regardless of how difficult they, the time was that they had going through this process, regardless of how difficult all the other seventeen districts' experience has been in the last two years, we actually think we're in a much better place now. And we appreciate Glenview's efforts, and we want to, in a show of good faith, reimburse that expense that they've had. And then also incorporate the financial model into the Articles of Agreement to the degree that we feel like is responsible, so that we can feel confident that this is the way we're going to move forward. And then obviously, like I talked about, shifting a lot of the leadership to the superintendents. We just want to acknowledge that we did say we'd be reducing administrative staff. There will be a significant reduction of teaching and paraprofessional and clerical staff as well. So almost fifty percent of staff and administrators over the next two years. That's a significant reduction. What we want to do through the member districts is to provide support to those educators that will be not asked back to True North in the form of having our member district vacancies promoted in-house to our True North educators, to coordinating letters of recommendations, to helping with resumes and cover letters, and even hosting a local job fair for other cooperatives or other districts outside of True North, even like in Cook County, where those educators might have an opportunity to interview and have another position. So again, we've gone through all these next steps. Tomorrow night is the first read, and then we'll be looking at this kind of process to go through, through the end of 2025. Just two things to note on this slide. We will probably be asking for additional support for human resources at True North in the form of bringing maybe a retired human resource professional in to help coordinate all of the reductions in staff. There are a lot of legalities, and we, we need to make sure this is done well and we don't miss anything. And then also potentially exploring a second year for our interim superintendents. Because I don't believe that, I don't think any of us believe that we will be in the position to hire a new executive director while we're in the middle of a reorganization, and our two interims are fantastic. They've been on top of everything, they have extensive special education experience and experience with cooperatives, and they are, so you've already gained a lot of trust in the eighteen member districts. So we would really like to consider having them stay on for a second year. It's not unprecedented, C-12, they're second-year interim people. Sometimes you just need some folks to stay for a short period of time to help through kind of a big change like this. So this is what will be presented tomorrow. Do you have questions? Yeah, please send them to.
Are you wanting me to send them?
No, bring them now.
Yep. I do have a handful, but I think you answered a couple. Percentage of yeses to no's, how many, so we need twelve districts to agree to?
To the reorganization plan, but they don't have to stay. So in other words, they can agree that this is the plan they want, but that doesn't mean that they have to stay. We just need twelve to say that this is the plan, and then we can move forward.
So based on that, we, as a board, will, like, our, the timeline for us will be similar. Like, we have to?
Yeah, we, I'll, I'll come back to you in October and make sure that you're, that you have some direction and you can give me some direction on whether or not we would like to stay. We would like to stay, because if we want to stay, we will need to withdraw or intend to withdraw.
Right, okay. And then, sorry, and then I had a couple of questions. You mentioned, like, this, we're kind of, if this goes ahead in plan, if a child's needs change throughout the year, we could potentially not be able to adapt to that because we don't have, you know?
So let me be clear about that one. So if a student is in a placement in True North, that school will adjust to whatever needs that child has, just like we would. We would have to find a way to make that happen. But if we have a child move in, that say, might need a placement at True North or might bump us up to an additional portion of an FTE, we would go to True North first and say, I have a need for a student. They might or might not be able to take that student. That's the situation we're in now. So we would then go shopping around or talking to other districts to say, do you have anyone that we can maybe share? It's just not a guarantee. For a while there, we were saying we could guarantee, as we weren't really able to.
So kind of based on that with the savings that we are maybe potentially going to get, that could offset. Right, we could be using it for in-house student needs, but also like we're missing a lot of professional development that we've utilized. So, and that's going to like all the people in-house that are also working with all the kids that teach at True North.
Breathe up some money for us to replace that. We actually have been a big user of the professional development. And to be clear, professional development has been outstanding. There is not one member district that feels that it hasn't been. It's just too costly.
Understood, okay. And then I think that was it.
For any services that might be going away that our students are currently utilizing, what will, will happen with it?
Do you want to talk a little?
Yeah.
Good question. So in July, the member district directors all came together, actually, here in Lake Bluff. And that was the first topic of conversation, because at that point, the only plan available was the potential dissolution. And so we all came together to start talking about how we would work together in the event that that happens, to be able to meet all of those student needs. That discussion has been paused while we've been working through this reorganization plan. However, at that time, there were a number of options on the table in order for us to either coordinate services together as districts, take on some of those pieces on our own, and either hire staff or look to our current staff to take on some additional certifications in order to meet student needs. And so we'll be picking up those plans. And now, now that we know what a reorganization could look like, now we can really fill in those gaps and start to work with our own staff members or other districts in order to coordinate those services. I truly believe with what we would be able to utilize through True North moving forward, the gaps that we do have, we will be able to find solutions in order to meet student needs. What, what we're going to be able to do with our own staff and, and, and working together collaboratively, I believe that will be good.
Thank you, and thank you both for all your emphasis.
It's been a lot. It's been good. Actually, it has been good. I think the superintendent meeting, Tracy was there to present to all the member superintendents, and actually, the feeling in the room was really good. I think everyone's very hopeful, I think everyone's really grateful, and everyone's feeling like this is a good opportunity to make something really great happen for kids.
So this has been completely shown to all eighteen?
No. It has been shown to all eighteen superintendents.
Oh, for them to understand, so that it can be, like, discussed.
Yes, what we asked all the superintendents to do is make sure their leadership council member was fully briefed.
Or to go in tomorrow to the meeting, add a question.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we anticipate we'll have families that will watch. There is a live stream link, so you can watch it or come in person. It's fun that way, too. And we, it'll be the reorg committee and dissolution committee together presenting.
And I, I again want to iterate, I don't think it can be overstated how much work this was. And you two really led it, and I'm so thankful. And the two issues that all the schools seem to have, I mean, there are a few issues, but the big ones are the fees when they're not using the services and, and on and off-ramp. And this fully takes care of both of those. So it's, you know, changes all.
Amazing.
It's going to be, I'm so amazed.
I mean, at the beginning of the summer, you would be like, well, this is.
Yeah.
When that went until midnight, there was, I would have never in a million years guessed that you guys would have been able to brought it back. I want to give a lot of credit to RJ Gravel, the new superintendent at Glenbrook High School. He came in and has taken a big leadership role in helping to support a new financial model. And that really went a long way with a lot of people. So Glenbrook and Glenview have both said they did not need for the dissolution we had. They did, they were not looking for the thing to dissolve. They, so both Glenbrook and you took them. I've been willing to come to the table and really work to make something happen.
Well, and it's really amazing that you'd be able to, you were able to bring it back from the brink. Seems like it will go well tomorrow, but that, you know, there was so, so much detail here. So many things to work out, but in the end, it seems that the kids and the families that need these services really value these services, and it's amazing, so.
As a Lisa, I appreciate this, the update and all your work. I, I hope you're going to be able to use this presentation. I hope you didn't have to write all this presentation just for us.
Nope, this is the one. You're getting the actual presentation.
I'm going to take it on too.
There's a lot of detail on there, too, which is why I didn't go through all the detail, but.
So Andrew, I had a question for you. Is this, is there any similarities between your school and, and True North? I mean, what's your reaction to kind of this?
So my school that I'm at, you do not serve students that have no specific learning needs, is for students that have been moved from their schools for behavior reasons, not necessarily for a specific learning disability, so to speak. So it's for, it's open to all students in the academy. But yes, it's not, you know, just for specific students with specific learning needs. It's for students that just maybe need a break from their home schools.
You have a whole different kind of a plan.
But we are partnered with C-12, but we do not offer special education services that might specifically.
Okay, but your funding and everything is kind of totally different than, than just the program.
Grant-funded, EBF-funded, and tuition-based.
So yours is tuition-based as well. So it, it support this whole?
I mean, to me, it looks like we're sort of able to support our learners, which is most importantly, but somehow also saving money, so. Yeah, I mean, I'm going to lay it out as I was watching the presentation. Like, we're going to be able to support everyone and still save this amount of money. It just makes sense to me.
And some of it will be reallocated. For example, the professional development dollars, we're required to put five percent of our IDEA grants directly toward professional development for all teachers that would work with students with disabilities. And typically, that five percent has gone straight to True North to pay for their professional development fee. Now will, and then we've also purchased professional development on top of that fee. So now we can just take that professional development percentage and put it straight towards the professional development that the designer we choose. But it's still, that five percent is still required to go. So reallocation for that part.
I didn't talk about it, we'll talk about it tomorrow, but part of the other proposal is to put some more oversight onto the program as well. So some of this reduction in staffing, we're, we're looking to have some member district special education administrators conduct some audits of IEPs or some walkthroughs of spaces and facilities to make sure that actually we're continuing with the level of staffing that we think is appropriate for utilizing facilities and services the way they need to be. So we, we got a little away from the oversight, and so we're putting some of that back in so that we don't wind up in this situation then. Thank you. Do you want to stay up there, Tracy?
I'm not, yeah.
All right, that's tiny.
Share screen, right? Oh, it's very tiny.
I can see it all. We get like four hundred percent.
There we go.
A little bit better?
Look, this one. Okay, so this is our sixth-day enrollment. Each year, we send into the regional office of education our enrollment on the sixth day of school. As you may know, enrollment fluctuates throughout the school year. And so the regional office of education has set the sixth day of school as a data point for all school districts to utilize to be able to compare enrollment year over year. And so these are our numbers for last year in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and then this year for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year on the sixth day, so that you can see a comparison. You can also see how we utilize information in the spring to roll student numbers forwards to the next grade level, so you can see differences between each grade level as they roll forward and how we use that for staffing to, so we know, for example, at the elementary school, when we need four sections versus five sections within a grade level. And you can see there, there can be some large differences in numbers from, from year to year in each grade level. And you can see also that our number of students that have been placed in a therapeutic setting has remained steady over the year. And then in terms of overall enrollment, we are down for enrollment over the year by about sixteen, by sixteen students. In grade?
I, I think we had some concerns about, was it third-grade class that was, they have four teachers in third grade? So we were concerned that that might tip over more than twenty-five, or up to twenty-seven, twenty-eight students. But that, that's not a concern now.
Yeah, and, and actually, from last year to this year, we've gone down nine students. And from second to third grade, they went down two students, I think, from second graders to third graders.
And the fourth grade, then we have five teachers, right?
Fourth grade has five sections.
So is that?
Yeah, because fourth grade this year and fifth grade are both, they're up over.
Yeah.
So we're, we're good with headcounts, you know? People teacher ratios look?
No, we have two classes at twenty-fourth in the school. No classes at twenties.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
Okay, our next, and I believe last, item tonight is policy discussion. Yeah, so our policy committee met earlier, this. Yeah, and we went through and reviewed press pack at one nineteen. Please take a look. That most of it is legal references and five-year reviews. So there really weren't any questions. There was nothing for us to really talk too much of.
No, the only thing we talked about was putting.
The board, the board member. Thank you. So policy, two-eighty, just to bring your attention to it. There was a choice to include some language around what would specifically happen if a board member violated their own office. And essentially, we decided to keep that language in. It was already in our policy, and we decided to keep it in. And if you have any other questions, this is the first read. We'll have a second read at the next meeting, and hopefully your first.
But really, no big changes, nothing. Nothing of any significance.
Any questions on any of those policies? All right, we have one. All right, we have one more opportunity for public comments. Anyone interested?
Voice, I think this is the most exciting meeting. Good job.
You get a badge for this?
Yes. Yeah. All right. Well, on that note, then, may I have a motion to adjourn to September 16th committee of the whole meeting at 8:48 PM. All in favor? opposed? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.